Hey, welcome back, everybody in the audience and those on YouTube. We're in the afternoon session of January sixteenth. Our next agenda item is could be a possible action item, more a workshop discussion on integrating transportation into the land use process. We'd like to welcome Brian Parker and Morgan Stroud to the board, and I will turn it over to whoever wants to go first.
All right, yes, thank you Chairman Hasburg. Just a little bit of housekeeping beforehand, if there's anybody in the room for the PUD twenty-three dash zero-two public hearing for four fifty South Sampson Trail, that is the one that has been postponed. It was noticed for public hearing, but it, like I said, has been postponed, so if anybody's waiting on that, they can take off. But yes, so this app or this item is a work session, really no action required at this point. I just wanted to bring it to you guys and get your feedback on it. In the process of develop reviewing several development applications over the last couple of years, staff has identified some issues with what we see for traffic impact studies and how they fit into the peculiarities of McCall and Valley County. And so we just wanted to kind of work through that with you guys. So first off, I'll put up the comprehensive plan goal relating to this. Really, there's a lot of emphasis in the twenty eighteen comprehensive plan which you guys adopted within McCall and the area of impact to move to more of a demand management system, encourage less automobile travel, especially once you've arrived in McCall. And then there's a lot of call for pathways and sidewalks and improved bicycle pedestrian facilities. And so what we currently do when we have a conditioning permit or plan to your development or something of that nature, we have findings in our code that say the development shall not create unreasonable amounts of traffic or shall be mitigated to not create undue congestion. And we just kind of play it by ear on what we think the best way of doing that or the app can identifying what issues may be occurring and how to mitigate those. And the current methodology that we utilize is the level of service, which I will hand over to Morgan to explain.
Great. So level of service is kind of the industry standard right now. And it really takes all of these land uses and assigns a traffic loading to them based on the AM and PM peaks. I think you can do a whole day also analysis on them. But a level of service is basically how you rate a road or an intersection and how much traffic there might be. So it's from level of service A through F. Level of Service E and F are usually considered failing and they need some kind of mitigation. So that's kind of where the industry is right now and you can really, you can get some good information from it. It is a well documented practice and it's very well utilized everywhere. Just about anyone in the traffic industry can do these analysis. So it's pretty quick turnaround if you have an applicant or someone putting those together. And they do benefit you if you're in like a large city and it's pretty accurate in that way, but that's where we've come to some of our downfalls. Is that it doesn't really, it doesn't really help with a smaller town and some like counties and cities like ours where we're not a big metropolis. So that's some of the challenges that we have. And we've been looking at that as we've gone through some of these larger applications. So our traffic patterns are more recreational, so we don't have that typical nine to five, nine AM peak, five PM peak. It's more in the middle of the day because everyone wakes up, gets brunch or breakfast and then goes to the lake or off to the mountains to go do something. And Brian put together this really neat illustration of our, we have our traffic counts on the left and then there's Garden City traffic counts on the right and those black boxes are what are considered AM peaks and PM peaks. The darker the color is, the more traffic there is. You can see it really falls out. It really doesn't match with what we have for our traffic patterns.
As a recreational community, Morgan, what I'm hearing you say is those standards are based on a Monday to Friday and our peak is the weekends.
Yep, it's the peak, the weekends and then midday.
Okay.
Our, our general peak times. As you can kind of see here, it's just an aggregate of all the averages, right, Brian? The average traffic per hour per day?
Yeah.
And which is funny because it this, this third street one was taken on Fourth of July, so you have the eleven o'clock peak hour on that Monday.
So Morgan, are these just cars only? This doesn't include pedestrians or bicycles or anything? This is just automobiles?
Correct. This is just automobiles. And that's, that's also the downfall of level of service. It doesn't really account for any other modes of traffic. So yeah, we would like to understand how our more, how our pedestrians move and those missing links. And we can, we can kind of guess by what we see and from living in the community, but it's not documented well in any of these studies or the bike traffic. Those are kind of extra steps, which is also part of this process that we're working through is what do we want to see in these reports? What do we think is missing that isn't standard that we would like to have information on?
But you look at this one, I'm assuming you're the one o'clock on a Saturday is your biggest traffic counts, same thing as noon on Sunday. So then you're saying, how do we mitigate that big flux of traffic at that time?
Correct, yeah.
Whether that be changing bus routes or opening up more sidewalk, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get in, we get into that with the traffic reports, but this kind of just shows we're missing the peak hour with the standard analysis. So they might say they have no impacts on a standard Monday to Friday level of service, peak hour analysis, but they're not really getting the bulk of the traffic if they're, that's what they're looking at. And they're only analyzing those, those weekdays instead of when our actual peak hours are. It might look completely different.
That's what I picked everybody away is we've got to make sure that traffic studies are done all seven days of the week. And probably definitely it's Saturday.
Yeah, and Commissioner Hasburg, the challenge with that is that again, under the current level of service standards, the process is to go to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual, pick out the land uses that are applicable to a given project and then it gives you a AM peak, a PM peak and a daily traffic count. It really does not have an estimated Saturday traffic load or really it is not really meant at all for resort towns is the challenge that we're seeing with this.
That's like everyone else up here. You go during the week because the weekends, there's too many people here to even get into something, so.
Why the locals ski during the week?
Ryan, does this include, include the impact area or is this, will that be into it later or what's the plan there?
So what we were presenting to you is the concept of moving some standards that would apply to the impact area as well as city limits.
Ryan, did you guys do any day other than July third?
We have, this is actually an aggregate of several days over the last summer. I can't recall exactly which days, but they were all, I think, June through August.
Okay.
And we have traffic counters. We've moved them around town over the summer, you can see here as well. This was really just to be illustrative of
Okay.
kind of what the patterns are.
I can't say we see the same pattern and the other traffic counts we have around town though. We have quite an extensive list that we've done, which it's interesting to take a look at and like, why don't these match up? Like, oh, because we have different traffic than this typical cities. If you're interested, we could send you some of those traffic counts. We have some from twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two is our last set of traffic data. And it's, it's good just to see how much it's growing also.
We've been tracking ITDs a little bit coming up fifty-five, so yeah, there's, there's definitely growth.
Morgan, correct me if I'm wrong here, but what I'm assuming is that if you're going to require a developer to do a transportation study, you want to make sure that you get the data collected that you need, not what they're going to provide, which is usually the way it works. We saw one, I think, for some of the stuff outside of the impact area list last year and it was like, you did it on a day of the week that was like the slowest day. That's not what we should be building on. We should be building on the highest day. So that will, that will be kind of a policy from you guys to developers. This is what we want to see in our traffic studies when you do that.
Correct.
I think that's important because it can be used to their advantage if you don't.
Yeah, and yeah, we see that on a few of these where it's like, well, we can't really require anything else yet because we don't know what that other step is or what that, how to translate this information. So Brian and I have been working towards looking at other ways to analyze traffic and the one that really caught our eyes was the transportation demand method. You can really get more aggregate with it and it really, you can really customize it to your community to really see what the traffic might actually look like. It's a different way of looking at it. And you can really, it's, it's measuring vehicle miles traveled. So if you have a development outside of the city limits or like in the impact area and they're driving into town where all the services are, they have a larger impact on your road network. And if it was an infill development in the middle of downtown next to all the services. So it's a way of kind of being more proportionate to like, okay, you're going to have five miles a day per house or this person's going to have like point one miles per day per house, depending on where you're at. And it'll help us kind of figure out what are impacts to our streets and it all kind of lead into maybe of impact fee or ways to go about proportionality. It's, it's kind of difficult right now to assign a proportionality to impacts. Like we have a few studies now that are saying they need to signalize downtown that are in the works. And it's like, whoa, that's an expensive cost. How much are you really responsible for in that proportionality? So we don't really have a good method of that. It's a lot of back and forth of, okay, you're causing this much impact, but your numbers are kind of off because it's not peak hours. This is what we think your peak hour is and what those, what that traffic count might be.
So your goal though, correct me if I'm wrong, is to come up with an actual impact fee.
That'll be one.
For different developments depending on where they are in the city limits.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be one thing that comes out of this. And then it'll also allow us to analyze pedestrians and traffic and bicycle traffic impacts also. So with the vehicle miles traveled, if you're going to dedicate this much more to bike traffic or allow these connections, you might be able to reduce your vehicle miles traveled, which will decrease what that impact might be on the roadway system. So it kind of brings all the pieces together. We don't have all those pieces yet. We're still in like the early stages of that. But they're out there and we just need to create that. And that's kind of the direction we want to head in. I think for the interim, we're going to have to work with level of service analysis and how we might be able to, how to move that to fit to our needs. But there's also a lot of calculators and tools out there existing already. I think Brian had one on the screen just a second ago. It's like a GIS map. Plug in your development, how big it is, what your land use is, and you tell it where you're going to be and it kind of gives you a estimate of what your cost might be for your vehicle miles traveled.
How would that work for? Not getting a real good picture here, but I mean, for us, say here's Carefree out here outside of the city limits, outside of the impact area. And somebody comes along, I want to put a subdivision here. It's outside the impact area. Those people are still, because in relation, they're still going to be heading where to? McCall. And so we're not going to put a proportional impact fee on those people. I mean, I can't, it just doesn't make sense to me. I mean, it's, I understand what you're saying and I, I get that piece. But it, it seems like it ought to be same to everybody. Everybody should be impacted because everybody's going to be driving the roads. I don't care if you're, you know, block away or you're five miles away, you're still in the impact area. Everybody should be helping to have the same impact on these roads because they're all using the roads in and around McCall. I, I don't, I'm having a hard time getting my head wrapped around that. Just why, what's, why that extra fee is being added on to a developer?
So the fee would be more like the mitigation costs of the development. So instead of like, oh, you need to signalize everything and here's your like ten million dollars worth of improvements because of signals. Here's more of your proportional cost of what it's going to take to rebuild these roads that you're utilizing that are going to be impacted by this development. So it's more of trying to address the increase of traffic proposed by a development. We have, it'll, it'll link back to our, our thoughts are that it would link back to our capital improvement projects and our pavement inventory. Where it kind of breaks down how much it might cost to rebuild the road or whatever mitigations or impact or whatever kind of fixes the roads need. And we'll identify those roads in the study of which roads we have, we think might be problematic. And what those, then based on the traffic, if there needs to be any mitigations, that's when that fee would get associated with it. Brian, am I, am I stating that correctly?
Yeah, and just to be clear, the developers currently have to pay to mitigate the impacts of their development. It is just in the form of typically and of constructing turn lanes, adding stoplights, sidewalks, things of that nature. The impact fee would really just be a simpler methodology for accounting for that and that instead of having it be a negotiated process, it's just a set fee based on location and type of land use.
Ryan, if the county does a road development agreement in the impact area in the county, then the city does one as well or is that that disqualify the city from doing that? You know, is this, I guess what I'm asking is the developer going to be double, double impacted both from the city and the county? How's that going to work?
So within the impact area, it would be either or. And I talked with Cindy and Jeff about this. We talked with them a few weeks ago. It would be instead of doing the current methodology you guys do for the road development agreements, it would just be utilizing the impact fee structure. I think that we may be getting a little ahead of ourselves too in the whole impact fee conversation that's to be coming down the road in the next few months.
So, okay, I want to make sure I got this straight in my mind. If you have a development, let's just say it's going to be in the city limits, you guys are going to have a set fee, what, per lot, per linear footage? In that development, it's going to go into a fund as an impact fee and then you're going to use that to repair those roads. Why not just have the developer repair the road? Is there going to be an option?
That could be an option. What we have found in, it is difficult to assess the proportionate impact in a fair and equitable manner of how much they are responsible for when it is largely the, the changes in traffic patterns are they're being partially impacted by a given development, but also a lot by background traffic and growth in the Treasure Valley and things of that nature that you're just seeing more cars up here. And so it's, like I said, difficult to come up with a justifiable equitable number or repair item.
Kind of the same thing that, you know, we're doing in the county. We have different areas that have different fees associated with them per lot development. So it's the same kind of a, of an underlying concept. Instead of just going to the manual and saying this is what, you know, it says you should be responsible for. It's a different calculation.
One of the things I saw is kind of in the back of my mind, especially on the road development agreement is is if the county says we're going to charge you so much per lot or some matrix and then we're going to go and fix the road. Chances are if you allow the developer to fix that road, he's going to be able to do it cheaper. Because he doesn't
Yeah.
all the rules that we have to go through.
Yeah.
So to me, I want to encourage the developer to do it because he can do it cheaper.
Yeah, and I, I think they're all still, we haven't finalized all of these yet. It's just kind of like our working, like what we're kind of working towards is something that'll be able to identify what those proportional costs might be and if there is an impact fee. But yeah, we're hoping to just, yeah, be able to work with the developers too if they need to build something. Because we found the same thing. It's easier to have a developer build something and either reimburse later for if they go over what they're supposed to be paying for with over their proportional cost if we have the funds or if we need to program it later. I could see there being an option there of you can either rebuild this or here's a fee that you might have to pay to mitigate for those.
That's what we're doing so that everybody is treated equitably. I mean, even one lot, if somebody subdivides one lot, we, we put a fee on it for a road development in the future. And so that's, they're basically doing the exact same thing that we're doing.
I think where we're all falling apart is the fact that we haven't been encouraging bike trails and walking trails along with that road. I think we've missed that boat and now of course the right of ways is a challenge to get, get those, go back and do some of those things. So it'll be interesting to see what you guys come up with.
I'm a little, you know, as I voiced at the meeting the other night, I'm a little concerned that we're driving development out of McCall into Valley County and into the other cities because, well, we're charging a fee, Donlea and Cascade or not, I'm hoping that, you know, they will start doing the same thing because the more us that there is for development, they're going to say, we're not going to do it here. We're going to go somewhere else and go do it. And I am concerned about that.
Yeah, we want to make it kind of, we want to make it easier for the developers to know their fees and stuff upfront too. So we're really going to work on trying to make this really simple, like a simple way to like, okay, if I have this many units, this is what I might be able to see as a fee for proportionality.
What about commercial uses, Morgan? What about, somebody comes in and builds a big grocery store or a big bank or are they going to be paying an impact fee for the roads?
Yep, they would. They have a different land use code in the ITE manual, so they have a different trip distribution, which is what the city of Austin's is based off of. Also, they do a similar example and it's just a worksheet and you fill it out. And then you go over it with city staff and work through all those details. But yeah, your trip would be different. So you'd have different fees based on what kind of project you're proposing. Because it depends on how much traffic you might be generating.
Well, I'm assuming if you're a motel or a big commercial, you should have to build enough parking. That would be a big issue. We want to make sure we're not jamming up our parking for this application.
Yeah, and I know in the downtown area, there's a parking management. It might be in the comprehensive plan of managing the parking efficiently. Brian might know about that, but ways to promote other modes of transportation within the downtown core, which might be a way to reduce some of your vehicle miles traveled if you provide a pathway or like a linkage through your property for the people to get there easier. Because the city of Austin has that too. It's a bunch of different alleviations you can apply for, like you have work at home facilities. So it's like a dedicated office space. So you're not going to be going out and about as much because you're going to be at home or you have a business center, extra bike parking pathways. There's all sorts of different ideas on how you could potentially reduce those vehicle miles traveled and not have as much of an impact. There's a lot of possibilities out there. Ways. Go about it.
What do you guys need from us? Just okay or approval or just talking about it?
I think just talking about it right now. We brought it to our city council on the, on December twenty-ninth and then we got their go ahead to kind of move forward with our next steps of getting an interim policy and laying out what we want to see in reports. And getting that in our code because we, we don't really have a lot of codes regarding traffic impact studies. And working through that level of service information now while we work on the transportation demand model in the background and just getting any of your feedback. So whenever we come back to you for the impact area.
Have any idea what you guys are leaning toward to do a traffic impact study is very expensive. So I mean, would there be a, a minimum number of lots that are going to be created or is you just look at it based on the impact or how do you make that determination? Who's going to have to do one?
So currently we have a draft outline that Brian and I have been working on. The industry standard is a hundred peak hour trips triggers a transportation impact study, but that's pretty significant for, for our communities, especially because like the figure Brian put together, I think one of the peak hours was maybe four or five hundred cars. So that's almost, that's a lot of additional cars for one peak hour. So we're working with reducing that to fifty peak hour trips triggers a full transportation impact study. That hasn't been finalized yet.
Isn't it like two per household? So that's twenty-five houses or more?
Yeah, and then there's, I've been doing a lot of research of other smaller communities and mountainous towns of kind of what their traffic impact studies look like. Fifty seems like a good mark or if you're on the highway, having additional requirements since ITV will likely. Sometimes they ask for studies or want to know if there's going to be impacts to their system. And then for commercial, I think we're just going to keep it with whatever land use, whatever square footage of the building triggers land use design. So we don't want to create additional hurdles. And then anything under those thresholds, it might just be a memo of like, no anticipated impacts or here's a very informal traffic count of we don't, we don't think much will happen here.
Have you looked at, I mean, other communities like ours? I mean, we are kind of unique. Here's Boise Place and McCall. So you have a huge impact of Memorial Day to Labor Day of thousands of vehicles that come to our community. Their impact in our roads and everything, everything. Probably ten times more than what our local people do. I mean, are you guys looking at any kind of, I don't care what kind you call it, a tax or bedroom tax or whatever you call it, that helps with, you know, what's going on and the impact it's having on our communities? Because there's a whole lot of use and it's going to get more and more. It's not going to slow down.
I think that's where we can kind of work with those peak hours or just the transportation demand and trying to figure out what that that total impact will be. The city does have the local, local option tax that kind of axes the, the recreate, the people who come up to recreate for the weekends because it's on lodging and purchase and lodging and not groceries, but.
We also have the road one too. They've got two lots.
Yeah.
One's heads and beds and the other one is specifically for roads.
Yeah, and a lot of that goes towards our street department for projects. And that's coming up for renewal soon, but that helps offset some of those impacts and.
We're jealous. You guys get that and we don't. It's not fair.
We don't get that. I mean, that, that would make huge sense to me as if you're, you know, we shouldn't be absorbing that impact. Old people coming up should be able to absorb a portion of that and not go into the black hole McCall coffers, but goes into, you know, this is going to take care of this, you know, whether it's roads or whatever, should deal with infrastructure.
Well, doesn't, and maybe I'm wrong here, but might be a question more for Brian. Well, doesn't, and maybe I'm wrong here, but might be a question more for Brian. If you do an impact fee, it has to be designated for a particular CIP, right?
Yeah, there's a very specific process in.
So there's a lot of bookkeeping you're going to have.
Impact fee, yeah. Yeah, this is the, the very first step in this process is kind of talking about this project. But yeah, there'll be many more conversations on impact fee studies and methodologies to come.
I think we should tax the Treasure Valley. That's a cinema bill.
So Brian, if you're doing an impact fee in the impact area.
Yeah, exactly.
Will McCall make the decision on where to spend that money or will the county make that decision on where to spend that money?
I think we have to establish a, a board to, or an impact fee commission if we go that direction.
And I would think that your road bridge department would be the ones who would be responsible for utilizing the impact fees in the area of impact. They are your roads.
Well, and that could maybe be something that we readjust in the, the impact area agreement down the road is that, hey, if you guys are going to collect it, you're going to commit it to a county road that's in the impact area. Maybe you should be in charge of that and not the county. I don't know, I'm just shooting from the hip here, but.
Well, we can't charge impact fees in that.
No, we can't.
So you guys can't charge an impact fee in the impact area?
I'm not sure about that.
I don't think so. I mean, they have an ordinance, we adopt their ordinances, but, I mean, I don't, I don't think we're getting.
So if they don't, if that's the case, then we don't even need to be involved in this.
Well.
No, you guys have an impact fee for the fire district, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's countywide.
It's, yeah, it's in the, it's in the fire district boundaries, has nothing to do with county.
Yeah, yeah. But it's in your ordinance. Yeah, that'll be something we'll need to look into. It may be something that we want to explore countywide as well.
I guess the only other thing I want to add, and I guess we're out of time, but is the fact that, I think you, we still have half an hour to wait. I think you have to keep the option open of rescinding impact fees. If your economy tanks and you don't have any development, you may have to look at that. You know what, we need to stop impact fees for a while to encourage development. And then once it starts again, because we know up here, we're a boom and bust economy on development. It comes hard and then it quits for a while. And being able to shut those off at a certain time, I think is important.
That's that board, the board has to look at annually and set whatever the impact fee is. So if there's a downturn, you just go to zero for that year. If it's a true impact fee. Well, we, you know, I mean, you guys are kind of following along to what we've been doing now in the county as far as assessing the impacts for our roadways and trying to get development to pay for it. They should pay their fair share. They can't pay it all, you know, we have responsibilities also is just the existing taxpayers and what they're paying for too, but development should definitely help pay for that.
Finding that balance is difficult.
It is, you're right. And I think for a city is really, it's kind of interesting because the closer to the downtown core is where you're going to incentivize development. You know, McCall doesn't have a ton of ground down there. So a lot of the, the infill hopefully will happen in that downtown core. But farther away from that downtown core, it's going to get more expensive to develop. And I certainly don't have legal ease on whether that's, you know, that's treating everybody the same or not, so.
Well, and you look at it on the other end of the spectrum, like some of these big cities, there's a lot of people downtown that don't even own a car. So why are they getting dinged for an impact fee for roads if they don't even use them, so to speak?
It, it would be a lesser fee the closer you are to those destinations because it'll be based on how many vehicle miles are traveled. So the closer you are to those destinations, the, the smaller vehicles travel, vehicle miles traveled. So the, the fee would go down in theory, how we're thinking it would work.
Morgan, how would you handle somebody like the new, I can't think of the name of the new boat place there south of My Culver's? Would that be, they be paying an impact fee for your roads even though they're in the impact area, understand that? And they're going to create a lot of traffic.
They're in the county.
Yeah, they're not in the impact area.
I think the impact area, how we've been working with it now is Brian and I, kind of, we reach out to Jeff and Cindy and we work through with the traffic impact study on our side and then send them what we've come up with. And then it comes to you guys through that process, through the land use process. So I think it would be similar, but I think we'd have to look into those impact fees if they're allowed to be in there or what those mitigations would be. Because I think ultimately they are just recommendations. If it's not, it impact fee and the commissions have the ability to adjust them or ask about them, question them as they come.
You should have somebody from the impact fee on that board or the impact area on that board, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Was I just going to ask you, Darna?
We have two from the county on the impact board.
On the planning and zoning commission, but I don't, I don't know.
We're not talking about that one?
I don't know what, how, how they do it with the, the.
Oh, impact fees. I think we need to find out first if we can do it in the county. If not, it's really a city issue.
And hopefully, if there's development in the impact area, they're contiguous and you guys will take them in.
Yeah.
We got it. It's, if you're going to incentivize development in that downtown core, there's going to be less development in the impact area. So we need to revisit, you know, why that impact area is there? If you guys are incentivizing downtown, which makes sense. I mean, that's where development should occur. It just reduces the chance that you're going to have development in the impact area. Hopefully if it's there.
Is there a lot of ground left in the city for downtown for development?
There's a few lots, but, and then there's some pretty large lots that are southeast of town, kind of Sampson Trail, Deinhard area. And each land use has a different traffic loading. So if you have apartments, it has less traffic than if you have all single family houses off of that ITE gen, gen manual. So it, it still might come out to kind of equal, especially if they provide pathways or other ways to reduce that fee. It's just ways that we can use to get more multimodal kind of facilities and have those proportionate impacts documented and well analyzed on our side. That good to me.
Hey Brian, anything else you want to add?
No, I don't think so.
Morgan, we're good?
I think so, if you don't have any more questions.
So you guys just let us know when you want to talk about it again and get with Doug, get on the agenda and we'll see where it goes.
We could do that.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you guys do. Looks like you're actually working hard there.
There's a lot happening.
Right.
How long have you been with the city now?
Uh, three years in February.
Wow, time flies, that's crazy. Yeah, I'm sure, you and Brian came about the same time then.
I think Brian was a few months after me.
Yeah.
And then the other Morgan, he saw left, well, after I got there, so.
Yeah.
Well, I forgot about that Morgan, yeah. Interesting.
So it'd take you three years to get a McCall t-shirt?
I have, I have a few, but.
They probably do a better job than we do getting t-shirts.
We don't have it, we don't have shirts.
You don't have shirts? They won't let us have shirts. Nobody likes to wear shirts. Okay, thank you very much, you both. Appreciate it. Safe travels back. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is another executive session, 74-2061-C to acquire an interest in real estate. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for item code 74-2061-C.
A second.
Yeah, a motion in a second by roll call, please.
Thompson, aye.
Pop and aye.
Esprick, aye, and Doug, we will be in the executive.
You know anybody else that's an engineer?
A 140.
We're looking for an engineer for our road department. Just putting it out there.